If there's feedback, well, we'll turn it off and go with the main mic.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen, I summon you can start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Well, I, we've got a few people here in attendance and quite a few apparently online with Zoom. We'll begin the process as if you might know, my name is Jim Burrows. I'm an attorney in Watertown with Convoy McKay, Black, McKendall. I'm here with my partner Dave Dursen this evening to discuss zoning matters involving zoning boards and appeals. But this, the Zoom process is a bit new, so if anybody's watching, listening online with their issue, please let us know as quickly as you can. We'll try to make corrections. I can't because, to be honest, I'm pretty technologically illiterate, but I'm sure there are people here who are much smarter than me and help out. But let me kind of jump into a little bit about who we are and get into it. Any given day, by office, we represent more than a dozen towns and villages. We also serve as general counsel through the city of Williamsburg, represent the city of Watertown, the special projects and the tax and stuff that matters. So for better or for worse, we deal with quite a few different zoning matters we have for many years. So the topic tonight, zoning board of appeals, Dave and I dealt with this quite a bit. So we thought we'll jump into it, cover some of the information. I know that you're all here because for better or for worse, you're supposed to have continuing education. And so you're here to try to learn something. Hopefully it won't bore you too much. But, but jumping into it, what we've got by the PowerPoint is, is an outline that will cover much of the material that we have. Not going to go through it line by line, but just try to cover some of the highlights. The thought is, is I'll go through roughly half of it, covering the nuts and bolts. And then it will be available for a few minutes for, for you to mic down. Then I'll turn it over to Dave and-
You're saying the audio is not good. Can you move that through speaker?
Up.
A little bit more.
Okay. Okay.
A little better?
Yeah, great. You can let us know if there's some issues with the audio or anything so that we can improve. So after I've talked for a little while, covering some of the material, we'll have question answer sessions. They'll turn it over to Dave. He'll cover some of the nuts and bolts with the variances, additional question session if you have that. And if something happens at some point later on, there's some questions to come back. Just reach out to a town hall commissioner or to us. We'd be happy to provide feedback if we can. Let me start off and see if we can cover it with the zoning basics. So if you really think of it, zoning really begins with a municipality's comprehensive plan. Cities and towns are required to have comprehensive plans. Villages are not. Villages are encouraged to have comprehensive plans, but that's important because a comprehensive plan really, it sets the backdrop against which municipal decisions are made. Is, can, is the audio okay right now as far as you can tell?
It's fine.
Okay. So, so the comprehensive plan, that's really important because the legislative decisions are supposed to take into account the comprehensive plan. And that's where zoning comes into place with zoning. You might think that a man's home is his castle. Well, in New York State, that isn't the rule any longer. For more than a century, that hasn't been the rule. The highest court, Otto versus Stein, over more than a century ago, decided no. No, that municipalities have inherent power to legislate, regulate activities and uses on property. From that case, more than a century ago, our legislature has adopted a number of statutes that address zoning. And for our purposes, zoning really covers three general topics. One is use. You'll typically find that municipalities will have districts within which certain uses are authorized, certain uses are not permitted. In addition to those uses, they'll say residential, residential uses is authorized, single family homes. Other districts might say commercial activities, et cetera, are authorized. But that's the, the primary thrust is going to be use. The second topic is typically going to be density. How intense can that use be on that particular parcel? Can it, can you have a multifamily structure on that one parcel or is it limited to single families? And then the third area, which you'll deal with quite a bit, is going to be the citing of activities on, on property. That's where you deal with setbacks, front yards, rear yards, side yards, et cetera. So with zoning, you're going to find for the most part, dealing with use and density and the sighting, that's going to pretty much be where you're going to be focusing on. The, the key on this is, is where you come into play. If you think of it, municipalities become large targets. What's going to happen is, is if I'm not happy with the decision I get, with what I can or can't do, I might be tempted to raise Cain. I might be tempted to sue the municipality. A zoning board of appeals serves as a relief valve. It's an intermediary between the municipality and the courts because you have the ability to vary from the strict application of zoning. So the ZBA serves an important function. It's, it's a key step before litigation. And a lot of times it'll eliminate any litigation altogether. Now, when we talk about ZBAs, municipalities are required to have zoning boards of appeals. Cities, towns, villages, you must have ZBAs. You don't have to have planning boards. You can have planning boards, but you must have ZBAs. Now, with a zoning board of appeals, there really are two appellate functions that we see dealt with routinely. The one would be the most common, the review of applications for area variances and use variances. And we'll talk about that primarily, Dave, will later on in the process. But that's probably one of the largest areas you'll get into with the use variances, the area variances. But the second appellate issue you get into is, is challenges where you're interpreting what a zoning official has done. Usually you're dealing with, how is that supposed to be defined? Tell me what it means when the code says X, Y, and Z. Those two areas are typically areas where there'll be appeals made, the zoning board of appeals to resolve those questions. Now, beyond that, there's, there's a topic called original jurisdiction. Original jurisdiction deals with ZBAs having the power to address special use permits and site plans. Now, for the most part, you don't deal with that. Most municipalities have taken it upon themselves to adopt planning boards. So planning boards will deal with special use permits, site plans and the like. But in the handful of municipalities that don't have planning boards, if that municipal board, you know, the, the village board or the town board, if, if they decide that they still want to have questions in site plans, it would go to a ZBA to, to process. But again, that original jurisdiction, we won't get into that this evening because it's so rare. Next thing is, is where does the power come from? For the most part, after that case from the Court of Appeals more than a century ago, the state legislature has adopted a lot of different laws that deal with zoning boards of appeals in a number of areas. We'll, we'll discuss these in a little bit more detail in a few minutes. Public Officers Law, for instance, deals with open meetings, oil request, fair with information law requests, hearings and things of the nature. It also deals with who you are as a zoning board of appeals member. We also have one of the bane's of my existence from time to time, the environmental conservation law. Articles three and articles eight deal with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, known as CEDR. CEDR plays a role with what ZBAs deal with. The, the next level, which is really important, is the enabling legislation themselves. That's where you're going to find in your town law or your village law or the city law, the actual statutes that say with the ZBA, if you're going to be interpreting something, it, it puts the nuts and bolts together, how you do it, if your area variances, what are the standards, use variances, what are the standards, et cetera. So that state legislation is real important on that. If you think of it, that basically gives you the framework. Then what happens is the municipality itself will adopt zoning legislation. Towns will have their zoning laws, cities, villages will have their zoning laws, et cetera. And within those zoning laws, that's where you'll deal with, with the typical things like density, uses and citing activities. In addition to that zoning law, what you'll find is, is it'll have the information about what, what constitutes a file. Is there an application fee? What has to be provided in order for the application to be deemed complete? And then in addition to that, you'll see some procedures that will typically be spelled out, that explain, well, what are you as a zoning board of appeals members supposed to do with this information? How are you supposed to consider it? How do you process it, et cetera? So all that information comes together before a ZBA and we'll cover some of that in a few minutes. Now, ZBA membership. If you think of it, as a ZBA member, you are a public official. Now, you're not an elected official, you're an appointed official. But, but being an appointed official is a big deal because in order to do that, you've got to, right off the bat, meet three, three requirements. Number one, you've got to be at least age 18. You've got to be a U.S. citizen and you must be a resident of that municipality. So you've got to maintain that throughout the term that you're on the zoning board of appeals. Now, that, that last issue, that residency is, is a little bit unusual. If you think of it for a moment with towns and villages, a village, if there is a village in your township, is going to be a, a sub-geographical area within the town. But if you live in the village, then you also live in the town. So if you live in the village, you could serve on the ZBA or you could serve on the town ZBA. But if you live in the town outside the village, you cannot serve on a village ZBA. If you live in the town outside the village, you can serve on the town ZBA, but it, it just, it's one of those idiosyncrasies. You've got to be a resident of that particular municipality. And the key is, you've got to maintain that residency throughout your term of office with, with ZBAs. Not only are they required in cities, towns and villages, but the membership, you have either three or you have five members. And your term of office would be equal to the number of members on that board. So on a three-member ZBA board, your term of office is for three years. Five-member ZBA board, your term is for five years. So you've got to maintain that residency throughout the, the duration. Now, so you can resign earlier if you want, but when you get appointed, it's for that five-year term or that three-year term. Now, that becomes important because if all of a sudden you decide that you want to live someplace else and, you know, heaven help you, what, what happens nowadays from time to time, husband and wife, if they legally separated or divorced and for the time being you, you change your, your address, that could be a separation. If you've got that separation and you're not maintaining that residency, that would be an automatic vacating of that position. So it's 18, U.S. citizen and a, and a resident of that community for the duration. Automatic loss of that position of being a public officer if you leave that residency anytime during that term of office. Now, being a public official, one of the things you do have to do is, you do have to take that oath of office. Elected officials have to take an oath of office within 30 days of, of the first of the year. ZBA members have to take it as well. Now, you, you only need to take it one time during the term. So three-year term, just take it once for the three years, it's fine. Once for the five years, it's fine. You don't have to take it each and every year, but you are supposed to take it. Supposed to take it in the 30 days of your term beginning. Now, the, the question comes into play, well, what happens if you forget to, to file your, your oath of office? Well, from a technical standpoint, what happens is, is that any decisions you might have, have reached throughout the term so far, they're still valid. They're not invalidated because you didn't take that oath of office. And typically what happens is you just continue on. Now, you could be removed. A town board or a, a city council or a village mayor could remove you automatically if, if you didn't take that oath of office and file it. But ordinarily, you're not going to see that issue come up. What I see happen is a practical matter, say, oh gee, I forgot it. You file it late, better late than never, but from a technical standpoint, you're supposed to file that oath of office. Now, as you, as you may know, being on a ZBA is pretty thankless. Nobody, nobody comes away saying, hey, great job. You're doing a heck of a job for the community. You're not going to make any friends on a ZBA. That's important because you're there for three years or five years. So the next provision you see on removal, you're protected a bit because you're an appointed official. But if all of a sudden in villages, in villages, mayors are the ones that are empowered to remove a ZBA member only for cause. The mayor can't remove you because doesn't like you. You, you really have to do something wrong, some ethical violation. Or if something happens, you, you don't get your, your four hours of, of continuing education. Things like that that are, that are caused. Beyond that, they can't remove you. So you're, you're protected because everybody knows you're doing a thankless position. So you're, you're given a little bit of protection with it. The next thing, training requirements. Not a lot to say here. That's why you're here. You're, you're some of the few people who are getting the training. I, I will say that, again, we, we represent a lot of towns and a lot of villages. And we do hear the stories about people on the ZBAs who haven't gotten the training. They, they just, we're busy. You're busy with employment, busy with your families. You get caught up on it. Let's face it, COVID hasn't made everything easy. It's, it's sometimes, it just gets put in the back burner. But technically, you're supposed to have four hours a year and you can carry over hours if something happens. You're real diligent and you, you've got lots of time on your hands or you're really bored. God bless you. Get as much training as you want. Now, one thing that I think's important with training, about two things. What kind of training? Local town boards, village boards, city councils, they have an awful lot of authority as far as deciding what constitutes that training. So you're, you're not going to see that there's some black and white rule on exactly what you must do for the training. Municipalities are given broad latitude on it. And, and much to, I think, my surprise, apparently your communities think that having Dave or me speak this evening qualifies. That's, that's a surprise, but anyway, God bless you. You're going to get two, two-year hours this, this year on that. Now, one of the things with your, your training that I think is important is what happens if you don't get it? What's surprising is it does not invalidate decisions you might have reached if you don't have the training. Now, I mean, I know a few years ago, I would have thought that, boy, if, if something happens, a ZBA member doesn't have their training and if it was a bare minimum that, that approved an application that you set aside, nope, doesn't work that way. But the fact that you didn't get the training will not affect the decision rendered by a ZBA. There are other issues that they come up with a decision, but not the lack of training. Now, let's assume that we, we've got the point now, so we know who can be members and what you're supposed to do. The next topic, open meetings. That's governed by New York State law and, and there's really a lot to this. The first thing, open meetings law, this, let me just read from the text briefly because there's a lot that goes in it. A public body is a group of two or more people that conduct public business and perform a governmental function for the state, agency of the state or for public corporations, et cetera. So, so the key with open meetings is this. It does not apply to, to corporations, S.C. corporations, LLCs, does not apply to partnerships. It, it does not apply to local nonprofits like the SPCA. Doesn't apply to United Way. It applies to public corporations, towns, villages, cities, their agencies, things like that. It applies to our local school boards, although no one ever goes there. But, but it does apply to our towns and villages. It applies to zoning boards of appeals. Now, that's, that's important because with, with open meetings, we were really looking at a few things right up front. The first thing is, is it's magical that, that when you have an open meeting, it means you're required to give the public notice. Notice of where you're going to meet and when you're going to meet. And that notice typically is at least 72 hours in advance. And that notice, you'll, you'll usually find that you post it on your municipal web board. You'll, you'll post it on a bulletin board and routinely it's published in a newspaper of general circulation. Typically, it's at the first meeting of the year. That's when you announce all your meetings are going to be a certain time. But you, you've got to give that notice of, of where you're going to meet and when you're going to meet. Now, with that, what happens is, is that any member of the public can attend. Doesn't have to be a property owner, doesn't have to be a resident of your community. Any member of the public can attend these public meetings. When they attend, they have a right to, to watch and to listen. Now, keep in mind, it's an open meeting. That does not mean they have a right to participate. It does not mean they have a right to speak. Here in the North Country, many of these boards, the ZBAs, planning boards, town boards, village boards, et cetera, we, we have a, a common custom that we call privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is just that, it's a privilege. If you've decided that you will allow people to come in and speak for a few minutes, that's fine. That's your business. It's a privilege. You can have restrictions on that, but it, it's not a right. It's a privilege. Other than that, they can have a right to attend, to watch and listen. Now, some, some quick aspects of that to keep in mind. If, if we have a public meeting and let's say Dave shows up and if Dave decides he wants to jump in on something, no, he doesn't have a right to jump in. Privilege of the floor, you might allow certain privileges. Let's say that Dave gets disruptive. Well, if Dave gets disruptive, if the chairperson of the ZBA, that's the chief parliamentarian, that person can control any member of the public by saying, wait a minute, you're disrupting the business. This is a public's business. We're not going to let you disrupt it. If he wants to speak too loud, too long, you can control that. If, if you won't cooperate, you can ask him to leave. And if he won't leave, then you can call the police to, to have, have somebody removed if they're disrupted. They'll say, well, I've got the First Amendment rights. The answer is, yes, you do. Go out on the street corner, you can talk to your heart's content, but right now we're doing public business and, and the public has a right to attend and, and watch and listen, but not to disrupt. Now, if we continue on with, with that, with the open meetings rules, you'll see here the next slide, it talks about an important case in the Court of Appeals. What it really goes down to is, is, so when does this apply? Obviously, open meetings apply if we have scheduled meetings, but, but really it's more broad than that. If anytime a majority of your board gathers to conduct public business, then technically that would be an open meeting. Now, an example to consider is this. Let's say that you have a, you've got five members on your ZBA. We're small town America and, and all of a sudden at the local grocery store, Dave shows up on a Saturday evening to get a loaf of bread. Jean shows up to get some, some milk and eggs. Katie shows up to get a case of beer. They're at the grocery store and all of a sudden they decide to talk about the application that's going to be pending before the ZBA. And, and they, they talk about an application. Can they? Well, sure, it's free country. I mean, they, they didn't go there with the intent to talk about that, that meeting that's coming up. So, so some casual conversations, the fact that you might have a quorum there, that's fine. That, that's not going to be a problem. But, but if all of a sudden they say, you know what, let's go take a look at, at, at the site. Elena's, is the applicant and she's got this project going on. Let's go over to, to that property and take a look at. That'd be a little bit different now because now you've got five members of your ZBA, but you've got three present. You've got Jean, Dave, and, and we've got Katie present. They've decided to go to the site to conduct public business, to take a look at, at the property and see what's going on. Technically, that would be subject to the open meeting, which means you can't do it unless you have notice of the public, et cetera. So the public can, can also attend to watch and listen. It doesn't happen that often. I mean, and as a practical matter, the point is, well, who's going to know? Well, I, I get it, but, but from a technical standpoint, if you're gathering for the purpose of conducting public business, you're supposed to abide by the open meetings law. So you're supposed to let people know. Now, one of the things you're going to hear about from time to time is, well, this isn't our meeting. This is just a work session. No, no, there is no such thing as, as a work session. A work session is a meeting. You might be conducting certain activities there. It's still a meeting. And if it's, if it's a gathering of a majority of your board to conduct public business, whether you're going to make final decisions or not, it's a public meeting. It's subject to the open meetings law, so you've got to have, public's got to have notice of at least 72 hours in advance. You, you've got to make sure that the public knows where, when it's going to be. They can attend to watch and to listen. Open meeting rules. One of the things you'll hear about executive session. Now, now, that's covered in the Public Officers Law. Earlier on, I talked about some of the state laws that, that address the topic. But executive session is, is this. Even though you might be a public body and subject to open meetings, there are some topics that, that the state says are, are different enough, unusual enough so that if you wanted to, you could go behind closed doors to discuss them. You could go in the executive session to discuss them. Now, when we say that, that doesn't mean you just do it. You've got to have, someone on your board has to make a motion to go into an executive session for a particular purpose that's, that's eligible. Then it's got to be seconded by someone on the board, then you have the vote. And if, if you agree to go in the executive session to discuss a particular topic, that's fine. You're not supposed to, to vary from that. When you come out of executive session, then you can continue to conduct business. Going in the executive session, you can invite someone with you if you want. So it doesn't have to be just the board. You can invite somebody else to, to discuss a particular topic. But you, you'll see the list of eight. Now, as a practical matter, the only item on that list of eight that you'll see in the overhead that you'll, might run into realistically is number three. Number three deals with a threatened pending or proposed litigation. Yeah, if you're on a ZBA, again, you're that relief valve between what the town board or village board or city council has done for, for legislation and a court. So you might be there and someone gets irate. They're going to threaten to sue you. Well, from a technical standpoint, if somebody threatens to sue you, you can say, you know what? I move, we go into executive session to discuss threatened litigation involving this particular application. If there's a second and in the vote in favor, you can, and you can remove as many people as you want to discuss that particular application. But, but again, if, if you don't get the motion and the second and the majority, then you don't get into the executive session. And, and you know, keep in mind, executive, executive session, you can go into it, but you're not required to. And where executive session really comes into play, if you think of it, is especially with ZBAs, a lot of what you're doing is unpopular. I mean, you know, you, you're residents of your community. Typically, the, the applicants are residents of the community. You, you probably know them. The next door neighbors that might be opposed to it, you know them too. And so now you've got to listen and you've got to talk publicly about what you agree with and disagree with. It's unpleasant, but technically, unless it falls within one through eight, you're not supposed to go in executive session. Now, there is one other item in the executive session that's not listed in the statute. That statute's 106 of the Public Officers Law. You'll find it, it, section 108 of the Public Officers Law, a little used provision. 108 of the Public Officers Law indicates that what's also a proper subject of the executive session is something made confidential by federal or state law. Whatever's confidential by federal or state law is a proper subject of the executive session. We use that because we know that in New York State, the Civil Practice Law and Rules, CPLR that lawyers deal with, section 4503 says that communications between an attorney and a client are attorney-client privileged. 4503. So what happens then? You have a ZBA meeting. Dave is a municipal attorney who happened to be present. All of a sudden, Katie's there with an application and she's madder than heck and she's threatening the, the, the ZBA. Dave says, Mr. Chairperson, could we go in the executive session for a few moments? And the chairperson asks Dave for what, Dave, well, I've, I've got some information as your attorney that might be helpful. Now, if someone makes a motion, seconded, approved, you do an executive session where Dave can provide legal advice to your board. And so that, that's used, so, so there's no threat of a lawsuit. And, and it's nothing on that one through eight, but there's another provision. And it is Public Officers Law 108 where if you want advice from your lawyer, you can use that to get in executive session, to get guidance. Now, I, I like that provision because again, part of what you're doing is to do your level best for your community and at the same time, you don't want anybody sued. I mean, lawsuits, they're expensive, they're time consuming and to be honest, telling the lawyer, you really win in the process. If you're trying to get things done, sometimes speaking with your lawyer in advance can, can, you know, be, be a, a real preventative measure. But, but that's something to keep in, in mind as well. Open meeting rules. One of the things that happens at open meetings, if you think of it, is, is if you make decisions, then you're going to have minutes made. And, and so you're going to have a municipal clerk who's going to be physically present. That person will make minutes of, of what is said, et cetera, to create that record. From a technical standpoint, if there's no decision reached, then the minutes don't have to reflect that there was discussion on X, Y, and Z. It's only if there's decision reached that the minutes are supposed to cover it. And, and keep in mind, those minutes, they're the clerk's minutes. Now, what, what the professional practice is, is we have minutes prepared. They're presented to the board. The board will look at it and, and decide whether to accept them as written or maybe move- and, and decide whether to accept them as written, or maybe move to amend and change X, Y, and Z. Well, from a tech, and that's done all the time, but from a technical standpoint, they're the clerk's minutes. The clerk can say, no, I'm, I'm not gonna change them, I think they're accurate. But, so, so you're preparing those minutes, they're supposed to be filed within two weeks, prepared and available for the public within two weeks after that meeting. And you think of it, that timeline's important, because sometimes, people wanna know what the heck's going on, and so that they need that public record. The reason that public record's important, and, and Dave will touch on it a little bit at, at the end, I think, of, of the discussions tonight, is lawsuits. You, you, you want the minutes to be available because you're trying to create that record. You're creating that record to protect the, the town, the village, the city, let everybody know that, no, you, you took a lot of time, you went through this, this is the application, this is the discussion, this is the comments, and, and your minutes are a significant part of that record that, that can protect the community. And, under the Public Officers Law, that opens the door to FOIL, Freedom of Information Law request, with FOIL. And, and that's a little bit off track, but I won't, won't go too far, but if a corporation, not-for-profit, SPCA meetings or whatever, they don't have to have minutes that are available for you or me to get copies of. But FOIL's a different ballgame. Remember, open meetings law says you're doing the public's business. Since you're doing the pub's, the public's business, you have a right to, to attend, to watch, and listen. They also have a right to get a, a copy of that record. That's what FOIL does, is it creates the avenue whereby they can actually request from your municipal clerk to get a copy of the record of that particular activity. Next topic we get, if you think of it, potential applicants. Now, normally, we would think that the applicant's gonna be, well, in my, my situation, let's say Dave. If Dave owns a piece of property and wants to, to build a shed, and then to do that, he might need to get a zoning permit. If he looks to build that shed too close to a lot line, the zoning officer's gonna say no. You gotta get a variance for that. Or, if, if it's in compliance, it might say, yes, here's your zoning permit. So, Dave would be an applicant, because he's typically the property owner doing this. Now, keeping in mind, with what you're dealing with, a record owner is key. When somebody comes in and says they're looking for this type of relief, relief that you provide is, is really important. And for the most part, you know, it runs with the land, and it stays there forever and ever. And so, you wanna make sure that the person who comes in looking for relief has the authority to do it. So, if, if Dave owns a property, but, but, but I happen to be his tenant, I mean, I shouldn't be coming in asking for a variance or something. You say, wait a minute, Jim, we don't like you anyway, but we're certainly not gonna entertain some application on Dave's property, unless Dave provides written authorization for me to do that. So, so, when you say the applicant, that's typically the, the, a record owner of the property. The next thing you'll look at is, let's say with Dave's property, he wants to put that shed in place. And, and, and let's say that he, he cannot do it, needs a variance. And it's pretty straightforward. But what happens if he, he goes to the zoning officer? And the zoning officer says, yep, Dave, you can put that shed right there, next door. If Katie lives next door to Dave, she can be an applicant. She can appeal that decision of the zoning officer, because she would be not just someone in that community, but she is a neighbor who would, would be adversely impacted directly by putting a shed there. She said, wait a minute, I live next door to Dave, and, and the side, side lot line is supposed to have a shed that he's 10 feet away, he's putting it 2 feet away. That's, my front door is right there. She could challenge it as, as, as someone to go directly to the ZBA. Dave would also have a right to, to appear and make sure that he can protect his interests. But Katie would, as a next-door neighbor who would have interest immediately affected by it, she could bring the challenge to the ZBA. Now, if Katie lived 2 miles down the road, no, no, no Katie. You might live in the community, but, but you're really not going to be impacted by what happens 2 miles away in, in, in Dave's side yard. So, as a practical matter, she wouldn't have standing in that situation, okay? Now, there's a third group of, of persons who can sometimes bring a challenge, and that could be with, with some other public official in your community. The, the, the quickest example's gonna be like with a planning board member. Remember, you don't have to have a planning board, but if, if your town board, your village board, your city council, if they create that planning board, then I might go in there, you have an application for site plan, and the planning board might say, jeez, Jim, that's nice, but you're too close to side lot line. The, the planning board could then refer it over to the zoning board of appeals for the ZBA to process it and, and deal with questions like that too. So, so you're really dealing, you're saying, who has the ability to bring something before the, the zoning board of appeals? It's typically the property owner who's got the property in state. It's typically a next-door neighbor who, who's, who's gonna challenge it, and then certain municipal officials can bring it. But for the most part, it's gonna be that property owner themselves. Now, if you, if you get to this next point, public hearing. Remember, what we talked about is, is, a zoning board of appeals is a public body, and you're subject to a lot of different law. And New York State open meetings law is, is important, because you give people the, the notice of, of where you're gonna meet, what's on the agenda, and the right to appear, to watch and listen. Public hearing's something altogether different. Remember, at the, at a typical open meeting, if I show up as a member of the public, I don't have a right to speak. I, I can attend, no matter where I live, but I don't technically have a right to speak unless you have the privilege of the floor. Public hearing's a different ballgame altogether. Anything that a ZBA does, whether it's a, a question of interpretation, or whether it's an appellate question as far as a variance, you must have a public hearing. State law indicates at least 5 days' notice in advance must be in, in a paper of general circulation in your community. Now, remember, cities, towns, villages, you can adopt legislation on dealing, dealing with all these zoning questions. You can add additional layers. You might say, oh, wait a minute, we don't think 5 days is enough, we think 7 days. You can do that. And in addition to saying, have it published in a newspaper of general circulation, you might say, no, in addition to that, we wanna make sure every, every neighbor within 100, 100 yards gets noticed. You can do more than the 5 days, but you've gotta at least 5 days, okay? Now, with a public hearing, that's important, because every matter that comes before a ZBA, you'll have a public hearing. And as a technical standpoint, anybody has a right to come in and offer comments. Now, when we do that, ZBA is having a right to say, we're gonna have restrictions on it. We're not gonna let Jim come in and talk for 30 minutes on the darn thing. You can say, no, we, we'll let you come in, but we've got our rules, and we typically promulgate your rules, and, and it might be 5 minutes, it might be 10 minutes, et cetera. But at a public hearing, anybody can come in and can, can talk. So, in my situation, if, if Dave wants to put in a shed, he's the applicant, he certainly can talk for the public hearing. Katie's a next-door neighbor, she certainly can discuss matters during the public hearing, but keep in mind, it's a public hearing to make comments to the zoning board of appeals. So, it's not a question-answer session. So, if Dave's the applicant, he wants to speak, that's fine. Katie comes in as a next-door neighbor, wants to speak, that's fine. If I show up and I wanna ask Dave questions, no, 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 that, that's improper. If I wanna ask the ZBA questions, that's improper. A lot of times, it happens. A lot of times, ZBAs are pretty, pretty flexible, they'll let me come in and, and ask questions, et cetera. But generally, the, the purpose of that public hearing is just to provide comments to the, the zoning board of appeals. Say, you know, I, I live, I'm so-and-so, I live just down the street, and I've got some concerns, because I think that if you do this, then this is gonna be the natural consequence, I don't like it. That, that type of stuff is fine. But for me to come in and say, I wanna ask Dave some questions about what he's gonna do and when he's gonna do it, now, technically, that, that's, that's, that's it's outside the scope of a public hearing. Now, with a public hearing, they don't have to be someone in your community. They can be someone from wherever. If, if John Doe shows up from New Jersey, just happened to be passing through, and he wants to come in, he wants to speak, yeah, yeah. Now, we know people from New Jersey might not have a heck of a lot to say, from our standpoint, but, but John Doe from New Jersey, he can come in, he can talk. Now, even though he can, can speak, the weight of what he has to say, you know, as a ZBA, you can say, look, Dave's the applicant, what he says is important because it's his property. Katie is, is a next-door neighbor, what she has to say is important. But John Doe from New Jersey, whatever. Yeah, thanks, John, you know, have a safe trip back to New Jersey. He can come in and speak, but the weight of what he's got to say probably doesn't mean a heck of a lot in your community. Now, so, so we're talking, yeah, some of the basics. We're not getting into the real nuts and bolts of what the ZBA's doing as far as variances and interpretation, things like that. You'll have enabling legislation. And with that enabling legislation, what will happen is, is, is it'll say, if Dave wants to come in with his application, this is what material he must submit to make the application complete. You might have an application fee, et cetera. And, and the first thing that the ZBA is gonna do is it's gonna make sure the application's complete. Once the application's complete, that's when, then important steps take place as far as processing. This topic, county planning. Cities can zone, towns can zone, villages can zone, counties cannot. Counties do not have zoning power. What counties can do is, counties can have and will have planning department, planning agencies. That's important as far as, as New York gentleman is for law, 239M. What 239M does is this. If there's an application, whatever the application is before the ZBA, doesn't matter, whatever the application is, you make sure it's complete. Once it's complete, the whole application, not parts of it, but everything, is something that may need to be referred to the county for their planning department to review. When I say everything, I mean everything, not, not bits and pieces. And, and not everything has to be referred to the county, because what you're gonna find is, is this, 239M has a 500-foot distance. 500 feet from municipal boundaries, 500 feet from state or, or county parks. And let's face it, we've got a lot of state parks up here. So, if you've got, if you've got some application within 500 feet of a state park, bingo, it's referral to the county planning department. 500 feet of a right-of-way of a state road or a county road. Lots of state roads, a lot of county roads up here, same thing. 500 feet, you're referred out to the county for 239M review, boundaries of state or county land, et cetera. Burrows is rule of thumb. If in doubt, send it out. You're never gonna be penalized. If you, you get an application, you say, look, is it 500 feet from the state route, or is it not? I, I don't know, maybe we're 400 feet, maybe we're 600 feet. If in doubt, send it out to the county planning. You're never penalized by doing it. You could be penalized if what happens is, you're supposed to send it out for 239M review, and you don't. If you don't do that, then all of a sudden, that could be grounds for reversing the decision you make. So, my view on it, if in doubt, send it out to the 239M. The county might say, thanks, but it doesn't apply. Just send it back, you haven't lost anything other than a little bit of time. Now, when we send it out for 239M review, set out the complete application, the county will have 30 days, 30 days after they get that complete application to, to review it, to process it, and to get back to you. They're gonna get back to you typically with, with one of four answers. They'll either get back to you, they'll recommend in favor of it, they'll recommend in favor of it with some conditions, or they'll recommend against it. Or, the more typical scenario is, they'll say, we don't see any significant county-wide issues, do what you wanna do. Now, there's actually another scenario where they just don't respond. But, but for the most part, they're gonna respond. They'll say, fine, we're fine with conditions, they'll be against it, or no, no county issues. Now, again, counties don't zone. They provide input, that, that typically what you do is, you'll take it to heart, you'll look at it. Now, the ZBA sometimes will make decisions, and you'll say, we'll, we'll, we'll grant this contingent upon X, Y, or Z. Can't do that with 239M, you've gotta wait that full 30-day window before you make a decision. You, you can't say, we'll do the following contingent upon the, the, the county planning saying X, Y, or Z. You gotta wait the full, the full 30-day window. Now, when the county renders its recommendation, it's a recommendation. It doesn't bind you. You, you have a right to, to do what you want. Remember, towns, villages, and cities, you zone, not counties. And the ZBA, you're the relief valve, not the county. So, if, if you want to, to go forward, and you disagree with what the county planning department has done, you can proceed by majority plus one. Now, majority plus one, be careful. ZBAs, gotta have them, gotta be either 3 or 5 members. So, if we have, let's say, 5 members ZBA, a quorum is 3. And so, if, if we have, let's say, 4 present at a meeting, and if the county recommends against that particular, let's say, variance, that doesn't bind the ZBA. ZBA can say, well, we, we hear you, but it's our community, we know best, and we think that based upon this, this test, whatever, we, we think that the variance is warranted. It will require a majority plus 1, so it'll require 3 plus 1, and require all 4 votes. So, you, you can, you can make a decision against what the county has recommended, majority plus 1. Now, in, in our scenario, if only 3 of the 5 members were present, be careful, because you might say, well, wait a minute, if we had all 3 that said yes, no? Majority plus 1, it would require 4 votes. If you only had 3 members ZBA, only 2 is a quorum. But if, if our 3-member ZBA was gonna do something against the recommendation of county, takes all 3 votes. So, so be careful with that process, and remember, that extension just means no. So, unless they vote yes, then it's a no vote. Fain of my existence. I come from a long family of farmers. I'm, I'm not a huge fan of, of the state in a lot of ways. When I hear the state talking about environmental issues, it makes me bristle. Like it or not, I live in New York State, and in 1975, New York State adopted the State Environmental Quality Review Act. SEACER. What SEACER does is, is this. It says that if you have a public corporation, state, municipalities, their agencies, if you have a public body that can fund, approve, or undertake an action, then you've gotta perform an environmental review before you make your final decision. So, if, if you back up for a moment, so we've got our ZBA present, we've got an open meeting, we, we've got our application, we make sure our application is complete. If it's complete, if in doubt, send it out to the county for 239M review. While you're waiting for that 30-day window to pass, consider your SEACER, State Environmental Quality Review Act. Again, what it does is, if you can approve an action, and that's what you're doing, is you're approving an action, then at first blush, SEACER applies. We've gotta deal with SEACER in some fashion. In a nutshell, what SEACER does, I don't wanna get too far in the weeds, because it's, it's really a, a, a pretty vast topic. What happens is this with actions. There's a definition provision within the, the state regulations, and they'll define the action as being either type 1. There'll be a, a list of, of, of actions that will be type 1. Then there'll be a list of actions that are type 2, and then there'll be a definition for unlisted. And unlisted is, if it's not in type 1, and it's not in type 2, then it's an unlisted action. That distinction's important, because if it's, if that action is type 1, or if it's unlisted, then we've gotta process it. If it's type 1 or unlisted, that means that there's a possibility that that action might have an adverse environmental impact. So, we've gotta process it with, with various SEACER forms. You've gotta devote some time and attention. The applicant has to submit part 1, you've gotta go through and, and complete part 2, and then you're processing it, you're trying to see whether it may or may not have an adverse environmental impact. Many, 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 many times, it will not. And so, you'll issue a negative declaration called a neg-deck. So, if it does, however, have the possibility to impact your environment, then we issue a positive declaration, a pos-deck, and that just means the applicant's gotta do more things. So, if you think of it, you gotta consider SEACER. We classify it type 1, type 2, or type, or unlisted. If it's 1 or unlisted, we gotta process it. Now, that, that's the bad news. The good news is, is this. Most of what you're gonna see, interpretations, under SEACER, interpretations are classified as type 2. Bingo, that's magical. Type 2, we don't have to do anything further for SEACER. So, if somebody comes in with an interpretation saying, look, it says I gotta be 350 feet back from such and such a location, where do you take that measurement from? Those interpretations, type 2. Those interpretations, type two for SEACER, you don't need to go further with SEACER. Area variances, and area variances you deal with a lot, they're considered type two for purposes of SEACER. So for the most part, I'm going to go out on a limb and say 90% of what you're going to see is going to be interpretations or area variances. And as a result, SEACER says it's type two, and it's type two, you don't have to do anything further for an environmental review. Now, the sticky wicket is if somebody comes in and says they want a use variance. You hear use variance, bells will go off. Dave will cover use variances in a couple of minutes. But with use variances, you've got to go through the SEACER process. And because I don't want to go too far in the weeds, all I can say is take your time with that process. Use your municipal engineer or your municipal attorney if you think you need that person to go through the process. So you do it right, because there aren't traps for the unwary. Now, you remember what we're talking about with ZBA, we're talking about appellate jurisdiction. That's the interpretation, the variances where the zoning officer's done something and it goes up to you. Now, you remember I mentioned that you technically have original jurisdiction, so that if that town or village or city doesn't have a planning board, you could have special use permit applications and site plan applications. Those types of applications are typically going to be unlisted or type one, so you have to the SEACER. But we don't worry about it, because for the most part, ZBAs, you're not going to be dealing with that original jurisdiction. You won't have to deal with site plans and special use permits. Your planning boards in your communities, they're going to have to have a much better understanding of SEACER with their applications. But that's a different topic for a different day. Now, I mentioned before appellate jurisdiction. That's because you're dealing with interpreting the zoning and you're dealing with appeals of zoning for variances. Now, one of the things that comes into play is it has to be an actual case. So if Dave thinks he wants to build a shed, and you know what, before I do anything, he's going to sit down with the ZBA and say, look, can I put my shed over here? Would you give me permission if I built it over here? Say, well, Dave, you know, you've got to submit an application first. You've got to submit an application that says you're going to build a shed. Where are you going to build it? Then you have an actual case. So it can't be hypothetical. It's supposed to be an actual case. And for the most part, what you're going to find is that actual case is going to be that appeal of what the zoning enforcement officer's done. And that's typically where the zoning enforcement officer gave Dave a zoning permit. Katie next door says, no, I think that's wrong. She appeals it to the ZBA. Or Dave applies for a zoning permit, is told no, he appeals it to the ZBA. That's the typical appellate scenario. You'll see listed the direct appeal. In communities that have a planning board, if there's an application for special use permit or site plan, that planning board might look at the application and say, wait a minute, you're too close to lot line. We know you're going to need a variance. Rather than requiring the applicant to go back to the zoning officer, to apply for a permit, be told no, and then to take it up, they can just refer it over directly to the ZBA. So it makes it quicker. And that makes sense, because at the end of the day, you're not trying to make your lives more difficult. You're not trying to make the applicant's life more difficult. You're just trying to get the darn thing done and done right. So that direct appeal from a planning board over makes sense. That'll happen occasionally. Next question, with interpretations. So you'll see that come up from time to time with interpretations of what the zoning means. The quickest example on my mind is typically going to be a setback. If we have a building to be built 10 feet from a side lot line, is it measured from, and if that's all the zoning says, 10 feet from the lot line, is it measured from the side of the building? Or is it measured from the e, it's an overhang? If there's nothing in your zoning that addresses where the measurement's supposed to be taken, that's a question that goes for interpretation. One of the things you'll also see in the example they use here is sometimes you have to be X number of feet from a neighbor. Well, is it measured from the lot line to the lot line? Or is it measured from the front door to the front door? You look at your zoning, and if your zoning addresses it, there, it addresses it. You don't like it, you appeal. But if your zoning doesn't address it at all, then it gets appealed to the ZBA for interpretation of what it's supposed to mean. Now, when we deal with these interpretations, sometimes you'll hear people talk about precedent. Precedent. And when you're dealing with variances, precedent really doesn't come into play at all. With variances, each variance is dealt with based upon the unique facts and circumstances of that particular piece of property at that point in time, et cetera. Precedent does play a role with interpretation. So if the ZBA has a question coming up, saying, how is this to be interpreted? Let's say, my example, we've got a building 10 feet from the lot line. Is it measured from the side of the building or measured from the e? Well, what you would probably do is say, look, well, the first thing we're going to do is we're going to look to the zoning law itself. If the zoning law answered it, there we go, that's the answer. If the zoning doesn't answer that, then we say, okay, let's look in the past. Has the ZBA dealt with this question before? If the ZBA's dealt with a question before of how we measure distances, then that's precedent. Now, that doesn't mean you can't change your mind. But more often than not, if the ZBA has dealt with that precise question before, that's going to be the rule you apply. Now, you can change your mind and say, wait a minute, that was fact-specific, and there are some nuances here that make it different, fine. But if you're dealing with interpretation, you're going to look to the zoning first. And if you can't see something there, you're going to look to the past record and see if you've addressed it before. The next thing you're going to do is say, well, wait a minute, our town board was the one that adopted the legislation. Remember, we've mentioned open meetings, creating that record? They'll have minutes. You could, if you wanted to, say, wait a minute, let's see that legislation. And that zoning law was adopted in 1986. You could go to your municipal clerk and say, can you track down the minutes from when that was adopted? Let's see what the town board talked about, because they might have said, well, we talked about a 10-foot setback, this is what we meant there. You can look at that record to get information on it. The other thing you can do is you can say, well, if it's not something we've decided before, and if it's not addressed by what the town board did, or the village board, or the city council, and they adopted the legislation, you can say, is it something that in common, in common understanding, this is what we think it means, dictionary definition? Or in the North Country, when we say 10 feet from this, what are we talking about? That can be persuasive. And if you can't find something there, kind of the last thing is you say, you know what? We don't have anything to guide us, so we're willing to consider anything. So applicant, every public hearing, remember, at least five days' notice. Public has a right to come in and provide their input. You make a decision on it, and that's what drives the train. Now, that pretty much concludes what I wanted to talk about. It sets the framework, I think, for the next level. So I'm willing, with Dave's help, we can maybe answer any questions you might have now. And if you don't have questions now, that's fine. At the end of the program, after Dave's spoken, we'll take questions out, too. But if you want, we can wait just a minute and see if somebody has a particular question. Anybody in attendance here, any individuals have questions at this point?
Jim, I've got a couple. If a board has five members, can two of those board members go to a site in a case before the board to discuss relevant issues without violating open meetings?
Yes. Again, the open meetings law, and we talked about that earlier, it does not apply to private entities, not-for-profit, SPCA's, things like that. But it does apply to ZBAs. But it deals with a majority of your board. Majority of your board gathers wherever to conduct public business, whether you're going to make a decision or not. If you gather for public business, so if we've got a five-member board, two can absolutely go to the site and visit, they can talk amongst themselves. It's not subject to the open meetings law. But if you have three decide that they want to go, then we do have to abide by it. And we're still with meetings law. So what that basically means is that, let's say, three want to go to the site at the same time, you've got to have at least 72 hours' notice, people saying, hey, a majority of our board is going to go to the site. That's a location, this is where we're going to be there. You, as another public, have a way to attend and watch.
Great. One other comment and question was you talked a little bit about privilege of the floor. Can you speak directly about privilege of the floor as it relates to the ZBA?
Okay. The privilege of the floor is just that. So we hear, I've got kids, and all I heard as they're growing up is, they've got freedom of speech and stuff. Yeah, 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 okay. We hear you, we got freedom of speech. When we have a ZBA, you've got open meeting, people have a right to attend, to watch, and listen. Other than a public hearing, again, public hearing, anybody can come at a public hearing. They can express their views. You put some restrictions on that. You can't let somebody speak for 25 minutes necessarily. Public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions. That's public hearings. If we don't have a public hearing, or in addition to a public hearing, a ZBA can, if you want, extend privilege of the floor. From what I see, it's fairly typical. It's a privilege, and you can establish the ground rules you want. So if you meet, it's not uncommon to say, okay, we've got the following applications on, one, two, and three. I see John Doe, you're here, I mean, is there anything that you want to talk about this evening for a minute? John Doe might say, well, I'm not here to talk about applications one, two, and three, but I just wanted to mention that I think that the ZBA's been really difficult in this community. Fine, if you want to extend privilege of the floor, let John Doe speak, that's fine. You can impose time limits on John Doe if you want. Again, if John Doe wants to speak, it's up to you if you want it to be a question-and-answer session. Normally, you won't do that. Normally, you say, look, if you want to come in and speak with the zoning officer, you do that in your own time, but we're here for the public business right now. With privilege of the floor, just be careful that it doesn't become a question-and-answer session. And again, if all of a sudden, if it gets heated, and it can happen, freedom of speech doesn't mean that I can go to a public meeting and raise cane. Now, the ZBA is there, we already know it's a thankless position. You're there to do the public's business. And if I show up and I want to speak, and you want to give me the privilege of the floor to speak, but if all of a sudden it changes and I become disruptive, then the chair of the ZBA is a parliamentarian, the absence of the chair is a deputy, has the right to say, no, they essentially gavel me, so to speak, to say, no, Jim, you're out of line, we're not going to go down that pathway. We've got public business to conduct, we're not going to let you continue to speak. You can tell me to basically be polite. If I refuse, you tell me to leave. If I refuse, you can call the police and have me arrested at that point. It's just public property, doesn't mean I can be in public property whenever I want, whoever I want, disturbing the peace, et cetera. So the privilege of the floor is just that, it's a privilege, and nothing more than that. Yeah.
Why is a planning board not needed? Not required?
That I don't know. I think, all I know is, planning boards, it's fairly typical. But what I think happens is just an added layer of government. ZBAs were created by statute. You have the original jurisdiction to deal with site plans and special use permits. But it gets a bit technical, and so most municipalities, they use that enabled legislation to also create planning boards. But for a technical standpoint, planning boards are not required. And in towns and villages, let's say, in cities, you're going to find them. But if something happens, they don't have a planning board, then if your legislative body decides to adopt zoning, addressing site plan, then your ZBA becomes a body that actually processes all of that. Any, yes, sir?
Are there any precautions that we should, from a planning board perspective or a chairman's perspective, about sharing information either by phone or email in preparation for a open meeting?
You know, I guess, I personally don't have any concerns about sharing information in advance of meetings. I kind of look at it and say, look, if you get information and you want to share it to make sure that you've got greater public participation, that's fine. But, you know, keep in mind, don't go too far down the pathway, because what we're creating with the open meetings is we're creating a record. And if you've got a record, somebody has a right to get a copy of that record, because they have the right to find out, you know, what's the nuances, what's going on here? If you, as a ZBA member, decide that you want to communicate with somebody else, okay. But remember that if I submit a FOIL request, Freedom of Information Law request, I might be foiling, you know, your electronic records if you want to communicate. I mean, the safest thing is to say, look, all the communications are going to take place at one setting. It makes it easier. But there's no prohibition against communicating, you know, ex parte with somebody else. If you do that, be aware that if somebody wants that information, if they submit a FOIL request, then as a practical matter, they can track that information down. I'm not saying it hurts you, but I mean, at the end of the day, you're just trying to do your level best. But the safest pathway, I think, is to do it all at that public meeting.
But you're also warning that, you know, if you communicate with, like, email with a neighbor who's interested in an application, or an applicant, you know, your email.
That email's available. And one of the dangers...
In case you didn't understand, that's what you were saying, and I think you probably did.
And the danger in part is, is that if, let's say, you communicate by email or text message with some neighbor on some aspect of it, and all of a sudden you go to the meeting, and that person shows up and says, wait a minute, I spoke with you and I thought you told me X, Y, and Z. Well, I didn't mean it that way. It's really cleaner and safer to say, you know what? Happy to speak with you about the particular topic, but just to keep it clean, try to do it at that public meeting. It's just safer for you and the community.
Referring to the county planning board agency referral.
Yes.
From what I've heard and reading, it's not required that they have to, if they do it, issue a variance, because an applicant didn't mean to set that.
Yeah, now, there, you can have, municipalities will have written agreements with the county on when certain things can be referred. And yes, some communities have written agreements with the Jefferson County Planning Department or Lewis County Planning Department, where there's an agreement that says for variances, we don't need to refer it. And the reason really is, is the counties look at that and say, look, as a practical matter, it's going to probably have no significant county-wide issues, so they don't want to get bogged down in it. But you're correct, with 239M, you can have an agreement with a county that certain applications, even though they might be within 500 feet of a certain boundary, don't have to be referred out. That happens.
Don't think our county has done that, have they?
You know, I don't off the top of my head, but you can do it.
Jefferson.
You know, I'm a planning board guy.
Okay.
And we got a certain entity got a variance for a setback. And that's great. And I did a referral for it, and there was a box there for site plan, you, the county, and the area variance. So I had to check also, and I just buy all that information. I felt that it turns out that they did look at the site plan and the area variance. So I got, I'm pretty glad, I'm glad I submitted all this stuff, because maybe it would have been kicked back if I hadn't.
Or somebody challenged it because they didn't agree with all of it.
Yeah, my rule of thumb with this is, if in doubt, send it out. You're never penalized by giving the county all that information. You can be penalized if you don't. And then all of a sudden, somebody challenges it, they say, wait a minute, the ZBA granted an area variance, but they failed to do the 239M referral. And so with an Article 78 special proceeding, they looked to set it aside as being arbitrary or capricious. So it's, again, if in doubt, send it out. So you...
Typically, the governing body has a planning board. Now, normally, they do the SEACER, they also do the site plan review, not the ZBA. Is that what I'm understanding? I mean, that's the way we handle it, I don't know what that is.
So again, what happens is from a zoning standpoint, ZBAs, in our common understanding, they typically are dealing with these appellate power, interpretation. So the zoning officer says X, and we aren't sure what X means, or we disagree with what X means. Or the zoning officer says you can't do this, you need the area variance or use variance. That appellate is what we typically see with ZBAs. But from a technical standpoint, if you do not have a planning board, then a zoning board of appeals has the authority to address, to process... then a zoning board of appeals has the authority to address, to process, site plans and special use permits if that municipality in its zoning creates site plan needs and special use permit needs, et cetera. But again, as a practical matter, it's very rare that you're not going to have your own planning board. It's just, it's a different animal. I mean, which we know, speaker, for instance, is a different animal, and you're right, with a 239M referral, it's a different animal because you're always going to see a 239M referral with site plans, especially use permits, if you're within that 500-foot distance. I mean, so as a practical matter, your ZVAs are typically only going to be dealing with the interpretation or the variances.
Jim, I just have a couple.
Okay.
I don't know if this is going to have backfeet or not. Couple things. Mike Borsey just commented. He's the county planning director.
Yep.
Jeff County does have an exemption agreement with most municipalities. It covers a number of examples for site plan, special permits, and area variances. If your municipality does not have a copy, contact county planning.
There you go.
And I have one attendee that would like to ask a question. I'm not sure how this is going to work. Lynn Field.
I can speak and I can alter my volume.
Okay, Lynn, can you ask a question?
Yes, I can. Good evening, Jim. Hi, Dave. How are you tonight? I have a question about the privilege of the floor. How does that get established? Is that through motion, or is that by the planning board? Is that by the counselor, I mean, by the counselors, or how does that work?
Well, in my experience, the ZVA, on an annual basis, decides what its ground rules are going to be. Now, from a technical standpoint, sometimes you'll see that by local law ordinance, but they'll have their own local rules, and they will typically have the privilege of the floor. They'll address whether they're going to permit it or not, and what rules they're going to have. But from what I've seen, pretty much anything goes. If you have a ZVA that decides that all of a sudden, you've got a lot of people there, and you want to ask them, if there's anybody who wants to speak on some topic for a few minutes, they can do that. I mean, it's the ZVA, that's the body. They've got the power. They can do it if they wish. It's a public's business.
Okay, great, because that makes sense. And I know currently, as you may or may not know, I sit on the city planning board, and we don't use privilege of the floor, but it certainly would make sense. And I know we're talking about the ZVA here. But thank you for that information. I appreciate it.
Good luck. Thanks.
Thank you.
I've probably spoken too much before, everybody. I'll give the mic to my partner here, Dave.
All right, good evening, folks. Try to keep the technological flow as smooth as we can get. Run it, get into some of the actual requests for variances that you see as a ZVA, and talk about some of the details of that. Again, it's, you know, one of the things to emphasize, the first one, and probably the most common one again, is the area variance. Point of emphasis there, again, is that the variance runs with the land, not the property owner. So it's not something in particular to an owner. And, you know, and that's something to keep in mind, I think, in all the variances that you consider. You know, maybe even more so for a use variance, the rare case where you see a use variance. And, you know, you may have a beautiful application, and a great applicant comes in for one of those. But I think one of the things you have to keep in mind as a ZVA is that, you know, you're opening a door with a use variance, for example, that won't be shut necessarily. And the next person to own that property and be allowed to do that use may be totally different. Their iteration of that business or something that you might allow could be totally different from the one in front of you. So you have to be a little circumspect and keep that in mind, and really take kind of a long view in so what you're opening a door to. You know, that applies, I think, somewhat even to an area variance. You might have somebody that's, you know, got a beautiful plan and, you know, a handmade model of what they're going to put up, and they're going to, and they're going to put up a beautiful structure. They just need to be a little closer to their neighbor than the zoning allows. What about when that thing falls into disrepair, or their kids own it, you know? And now it becomes a whole different ballgame. So, you know, you have to keep those things in mind. So anyway, as alluded to, the two types of variances are area and use. Area variances often request or seek setback variations, height variations, lot coverage variations, and frontage variations. In other words, it requires building lot size and, you know, and that type of thing. So there are a number of factors that are to be considered by the ZVA when you get one of these applications. And some years ago, I want to say '92, early '90s, I believe, the test for an area variance changed from kind of a rote, a rote kind of set of factors to a balancing of a number of factors. And there's five factors that are kind of listed in the outline that I'll go over. And what you're doing is balancing these five factors against any burden to the health, safety, or welfare of the community in considering whether to grant this variance. So they include, affect that neighborhood character, whether there's an alternative way to accomplish the goal of the variance that doesn't require an actual variance, how substantial the variance is, volume or distance-wise, and whether the variance will have an effect, a negative effect, on the environment of the project area, and whether the hardship or difficulty encountered by the property owner is self-created or not. So those are the five tests. We'll go through them a little bit. Again, these are not, the tests are not as strict. They're not exclusive. One doesn't knock you out necessarily. They're considered together, again, against health, safety, and welfare impacts on the community in general. So the first one is, what you look at generally is, is the character of the surrounding neighborhood going to be affected in a negative way? You know, is granting a setback variance going to really affect the neighbor or neighbors in a negative way by affecting their ability to enjoy and use their property as they might like to, as it going to affect, you know, access for emergency vehicles, or even just the convenience of the neighbor, that type of thing? There's a lot of different ways of looking at it, but again, each case is basically unique. You need to turn over those issues. And as Jim alluded to earlier, you know, the most important thing to do as you go through the process is to document the facts presented or not presented by the applicant, and to set forth the facts that you've considered that were presented to you, and your rationale for deciding whether, you know, yeah, this impact is going to have a negative effect, or no, it's not. It's going to have a minor effect, nothing for us, or really the neighboring landowners to worry about. And to document that so that when you make a decision, it's clear what facts you relied on, and what determinations you made above the particular standard based on those facts. So. The next consideration is whether there are alternatives to a variance. You're looking at things like, all right, somebody wants to come in and they want to go closer to the street because, you know, they don't want to use their backyard to do a house expansion, an addition. And they add, say, you know, maybe they're adding 500 square feet or something to their house. So they want to go closer to the street, that is necessary. Or maybe they want to go on an even more contentious setting. Maybe they want to go closer to the river, you know? And get closer to the water. And, you know, you want to look at whether there are other alternatives to that on that piece of ground that they have to work with. Can they go, can they go up to add square footage without having to block their neighbor's view of the water, or block the view of an intersection for the neighbor pulling out of their driveway, that type of thing? Are there other alternatives? Maybe they want to go closer to the street because they like having a batting cage for their kid in their backyard. That's nice. That may be convenient. That may be their personal benefit. But you have to look at whether it's really, A, a long-term benefit to them, although that's not really your job. But B, more importantly, you know, what impact does that have, again, on, say, the street skate? Or the views, the safety of the view up and down the street to bump air dish and out, and maybe cut off the view of motorists or pedestrians, or that type of thing, that are trying to mine traffic, driveway traffic, and intersection traffic, that type of thing? So look and see if there are alternatives that applicant can use to avoid having to ask for the variance at all. The other thing to look at is how substantial the variance is, and, you know, whether it's really minor. We're talking about a couple of feet because they got to avoid a wellhead or septic, you know, tank or something like that. They need to put a structure that's otherwise allowed a little closer to the line because of that. Or, again, are they asking to gobble up 50% or more of the setback, you know, so that they can add a fourth stall to their garage, that type of thing? You know, you have to look at that and say, all right, how substantial is it? That's one of the factors to consider. Obviously, minor variations or variances are a little less onerous for most people and most neighbors that have to deal with them or put up with them than a major one that might impact their living conditions. The next one is whether physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood will be negatively impacted. And so you may be looking at, you know, whether the variance requested increases surface water runoff significantly, you know, from impervious surfaces, for example, or whether it is going to impact some kind of an environmental feature, whether it's a significant, you know, aesthetic feature or a wetland feature, a water course, you know, creek, stream, brook, something like that. Will it, you know, impact some significant environmental species or something like that? You can look at those things. Also, will it affect or change noise, light, that type of thing? That goes a little bit into the area of neighborhood conditions and consistency there. But that could also, you know, light and light pollution, for example, is a lot more of an issue and a topic of planning and zoning concern that I'd ever used to be. People started to realize that there's maybe some value to having a dark sky at night as opposed to, you know, a lot of the light. So these are some of the things you'll want to look at. Another one, the last one to look at is whether the difficulty created is self-created, you know, or is it something that really is created by maybe a natural feature on the property? Again, to use an example, maybe you've got a rock outcropping on one side of your lot where you have lots of room, but that's really difficult to build on or around, or you have an existing underground structure over there. You have a right of way on one side, so instead of building where you have extra ground, your only option is to go out on another side closer to a neighbor. Those are things to consider. Those are examples of actual, you know, property-based or ground-based challenges versus a self-created one, which is along the lines of, well, you moved into a neighborhood where, you know, the maximum lot coverage is 50%. You want to build a house that covers 85% of the lot. That's, you know, that's different. And nobody gets a free pass, you know, obviously, as you probably know, because they bought a piece of property or came into a parcel with a plan that isn't allowed by zoning. You know, ignorance of what the requirements and restrictions are is not a hardship that you're there to give people relief from. Okay? So. Let's see here. So I'll move on a little bit there. The next area or type of variances is the use variance. And that one, technically, from legal standpoint, should be, and generally is, a lot rarer, a lot harder to qualify for. And the rules are strictly applied under the law. There's a lot of case law on this stuff. So in order to grant one of these use variances, and again, just, you probably all know what it is, but it's somebody coming in and saying, you know, this use isn't allowed in the zoning district that I'm in. I want to do, you know, either more residential units than what the zoning allows, or I want to do a commercial use in a residential district. Or maybe even, you know, on rare occasion, vice versa. You'll see on occasion some commercial districts that don't really allow for residential uses, and somebody will want to, you know, come in and do that. But there are four criteria for the use variance, and they include proving that the property is unable to achieve a reasonable return for any of the allowed uses in that zoning district, and proving that the circumstances encountered by the applicant are unique to that property, not just unique to that individual owner. Prove that the hardship that the owner is facing in being able to make economic use of the property is not self-created. And then proving that, again, that the essential character of the neighborhood will not be altered in a negative way if the use variance is granted. Again, just to circle back on the self-created hardship thing, again, one of the ways you could, you know, always argue that the hardship isn't your creation is if you have been there long enough that you preceded zoning. You know, you've owned that property, you've owned that building before zoning was there. And most zoning laws, they obviously have grandfather clauses that often will grandfather a use, though grandfather a non-conforming lot, it's not big enough or whatever, even though, whether it's developed or what have you, a lot of times. But the issue is, you know, you can get, that's one of the few ways to argue that, and win that argument, that the hardship that you have was not one you created because you were there before zoning was there. That's probably getting a lot rarer, I would say, you know, the longer zoning has been around. And in the North Country, you know, I think in the '80s, Gene knows this probably pretty well, when the first Ford drum expansion came about, that really saw zoning take off up here. There were a lot of towns and villages that had very rudimentary zoning or no zoning at all at that time. But, you know, that's been a long time, so. Anyway, we'll go through the standards for the use variance as well. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not keeping up here. Actually, you're keeping up, forming a line, that's a lot. So the first thing that, that you're looking at is whether or not you have to prove that you can't make a reasonable turn, return on, on the value of the property for any permitted use under the current zoning. So that includes any current lawful, non-conforming use and any use allowed by a previous grant of a variance. So, um, what the courts have said in interpreting this, um, you know, and this all comes from town law, New York State's town law, um, is that only actual dollars and cents proof is acceptable and, and sufficient to meet this burden. Unfortunately, the law doesn't really give a formula for, for how you go about proving that. I guess that's good and bad, it, it allows for creativity. But there are, um, you know, case law has defined what's not good proof in, in some cases. You know, examples in this outline include that, you know, you can't come in and say, well, you know, I've got a business here that's allowed and, and I'm making, you know, X dollars a month. And, and just win a use variance by saying, you know, a different business, this other business I want to open, oh, will make me two X dollars a month. You as a, as a zoning board have the ability and the discretion to decide, well, is X a reasonable return? X being an allowed use, uh, you know, and X dollars being what you're making with that allowed, allowed use. Is that a reasonable return? Or, you know, is that, that rate of return really a negative? Negative number so that that person says, you know, I can't make a reasonable living. I can barely cover the carrying costs of this property with the uses that are allowed. If you can prove that using economic proof, showing proof that you've probably, that you've tried it, that you've made a good effort at it. And, and that either conditions of the, of the market or whatever, the economy have changed such that the allowed uses just don't fly. Then, then you have a good start at maybe making a successful, uh, claim. That, that you got, need to be allowed to do something else. But if you can't, and it's really just, you know, I'm making, you know, passive, passable living, but I could be making twice as good a living or three times as good a living doing something else. That's a harder argument to win according to the courts, okay? The next, next one, uh, shows us what some insufficient proofs of financial hardship are. Uses the example of, you know, a realtor saying that, well, um, you know, I can sell this property for, for a half a million dollars if we can get a permit to put a, a bar, tavern and, and, uh, you know, karaoke operation in here, but I can only sell it for a quarter million if, if we, uh, we're only allowing the bowling alley that, that the zoning calls for, um, or permits. That in and of itself is not going to usually carry the day, uh, first of all. For a couple of reasons, the one not the least being that a realtor has invested interest in, in selling property for, for more than, you know, or for the highest dollar that they can get. So they're not a disinterested witness by any means. But also because, um, I think the law tends to favor a, a professional appraisal of property. If you're going to do something like that, and appraisal of, uh, the value of, of business operation to actually prove, you know, what, what the property is capable of earning over somebody, um, a lesser form of opinion. Another example given here is that showing that a property, uh, value has declined is, is not necessarily going to carry the day. You know, unless you can also establish that you didn't overpay for the property when you bought into it, for example. You know, the ZVA's job is not to bail people out of bad business decisions that they made. Or bail people out, um, you know, because they bought in at the very peak of the market and then markets changed and everybody's property values have gone down. You know, it's, it's not, this is not designed to, uh, provide an outlet or relief for that by changing the use of, of the property that's allowed. Again, you know, I use that example of the, you know, maximizing profit, um, you know, to, to allow a different use. And, and I think already made the point that it's not your job to, uh, to help an applicant or to permit an applicant to maximize the income from the property. It's your job to evaluate whether the allowed uses are capable of, of allowing that property in order to make a reasonable return or reasonable, um, living on that property. Versus, you know, maximizing what they can get out of that property. Again, there's no, there's no hard set, uh, rule for what is reasonable. The board has to use its discretion. I, I think it's probably safe to say that it's not reasonable to say you have to sit there and lose money on, on a piece of property, a commercial endeavor or something like that. But obviously, there's a lot of things that have to be proven by the applicant to show that, that there's no way that they can make a, uh, you know, a living doing something that's allowed under the zone. The other standard, um, is showing that the circumstance that is encountered, the difficulty encountered is unique to the property and not just unique to the owner. So to be unique to the property is, it can't be something that, um, the, a, a large segment of the, the other properties in the same zoning district are facing, you know, technically. So, um, the examples given in, in the outline are, are somewhat instructive. You know, you look at somebody that comes in and says, well, I want to have a home office because I've got, you know, a, a family member that needs home care and I'm, and I'm, uh, the only way I can provide that, I can't provide it any other way is to provide it myself. And that means I got to work from home now, I got to be able to see my customers or clients and, you know, that's going to take some extra parking and stuff like that. It's compelling, you know, Jim talked about, uh, ZVA members not being, um, popular. But as compelling as that story might be, it is not an example of something that is unique to the property. And that's what you're supposed to show, the applicant's supposed to show, um, to meet that standard. That's really a unique circumstance to that individual, that family, maybe unfortunate, but it's not a unique circumstance of the property. The other one that's given, you know, so you've got a, a large historic home, that was the original manor house, you see that all the time around here. Once in a while you can pick out, alright, there's, there was the old farmhouse. It's grander than anything within two miles, you know? But, um, in areas outside of ours, Pennsylvania or something, for example, you'll see where that manor house is now surrounded by these, these, uh, McMansions or, or, you know, little bungalow style, Levittown style houses. It just doesn't fit, um, it doesn't fit with, um, you know, the, the needs of a modern family, which tends to be a lot smaller. So that is a case where the board could conceivably say, yeah, you know, it's not reasonable to, to require somebody to, uh, to try to live in an eight-bedroom house or something. And he paid the taxes on it and all that when they, you know, the average family is now, you know, less than two kids or what have you in America. And, and so that's a case where you might be able to give some relief to somebody, allow them to do something. You know, turn that into a, a multi-family house or, or even turn it into a home business or a business of some kind. It's not gonna, um, you know, negatively impact the, the neighborhood potentially if they can't. You know, that unique structure just doesn't fit the needs of the district, uh, in the typical home in the district anymore. Another one, you know, example that I have is, is from the city of Watertown where, um, you know, I've seen, um, there's whole neighborhoods there where you have these huge old houses and that fit this, this kind of mold. And, and again, you know, people, the prices on them tend to be dropping like a stone. They're hard to, they're hard to move. Uh, and you'll see people come in occasionally and, and buy them and then realize, oh my God, I can't afford to, I can't afford the taxes on that. And, uh, the heat bills are, are ridiculous. We didn't think to, to ask about that before we put in our purchase offer. And, uh, so now we think maybe we want to have, uh, you know, be able to use this as a guest, guest quarters or Airbnb part of the house or something like that. I've seen that happen in Watertown, you know? Again, that's kind of a, an example where if that's one of 20 houses in that neighborhood, then they're all basically in the same boat, that's really not a unique circumstance. That's more a self-created, a good example of a self-created hardship technically. I've seen boards grant relief in cases like that too, although they probably shouldn't have, you know? My, my observation of that comes as a bystander, not as a counselor, so, you know, it's, um, it's all the stuff we see. Again, this gets into, I kind of bled over into this, this next standard, which is, um, the self-created hardship. That example that I just gave you, um, is one of those self-created hardships. Another one is given here is, is, you know, somebody that comes in and, and starts a, uh, a use that is prohibited by the law and then, and then asks for forgiveness. You see that a lot, not uncommon at all if you're on a ZVA. You get an applicant that, that decides it's better to ask for forgiveness than for permission ahead of time. So they went ahead and did something, um, again, not complying with the law. And then even if they've gone and, you know, God forbid, built a, built a huge addition or something like that, sunk a hundred thousand dollars into a building. Is against personally compelling, as that may be. It's really not your job as a ZVA member to, um, to make that right by, by granting, um, a use variance because they, they gone and done something that's not even allowed in the district. It's a, that's a classic example of a self-created hardship based on ignorance of the law. Or worse, just, just deciding they were going to try to get away with it for as long as they could. And, and, you know, finally somebody, um, blew them in, so to speak. Again, you know, some of the, you don't see too many hardships that are not self-created. But the few that you do see are, again, structures or uses that predate zoning or predate perhaps, um, changes in zoning. Maybe the zoning changed around the, the building, um, the property. And, and the other thing that you can see happen is a situation where a use may be grandfathered, but then it's discontinued for a period of time. And a lot of zoning laws will say, you know, if that use is discontinued for a year or more, you've lost your right to, to come back in and do it. Nonetheless, you could see a scenario where that happens or, or even where the zoning law has changed to be more restrictive. And, um, you know, the building or the, or the parcel is really just not suited for, for anything else. Or, you know, you've got a perfectly good building that got discontinued, uh, you know, operations were seized for a period of time. And now they're not grandfathered for the use anymore. And, and so that, that's a, you know, kind of a unique set of circumstances that, you know, you could probably make an argue, argument as a, an applicant, that it's not completely self-created or, or that it certainly presents a unique circumstance that, uh, could open the door for some relief for, for a use variance. Finally, if you get through those stages, uh, or those standards and steps for use variance, the final one that you come to is considering whether the proposed change will have a detrimental effect in general on the neighborhood. Whether it's going to pose, uh, any kind of safety hazards, uh, whether it's going to create, nuisances of any kind, noise, light, dust, chemical hazards, smells, uh, traffic that really is a, a negative impact, um, those types of things. Any kind of traffic hazard and things like that. That's the final thing to consider. If the applicant has, has passed the first three, I will say the first three are probably, you know, the harder ones to get by. Usually an applicant can, can do a lot, uh, to, to minimize impacts on neighbors. And they will try to, uh, as much as they can to, to prevent negative impacts on the neighborhood. But, but proving that, that you can't do something within the law to make a decent return is, is probably one of the hardest standards. And then that unique standard, again, very challenging. I'll go on to just a few more general principles, which are that, to keep in mind that whether it's an area variance or a use variance, you don't have to just stick with what the applicant proposes. You can use some creativity and, and some initiative, um, you know, to consider whether you need to grant the whole variance that they're asking for. Or you can see your way clear and say, no, we'll give you about half of that. Or, you know, a, a piece of what you're asking for on the condition that you, you're going to do something else. So you can impose conditions, um, you can cut back the request or alter the request as, as part of a, you know, a, a resolution of the board to consider a variance request. Rather than giving, giving the applicant everything that they're asking for. Some of the conditions that are typically considered are, um, things like traffic control, screening, um, lighting, um, standards that will prevent, you know, light from spilling over on the neighboring properties and, and annoying, uh, neighbors that, you know, are either not commercial neighbors, for example, or, or that, that the things. So you're, you're getting an application for a, a commercial use that's adjacent to residential uses. Landscaping, traffic control, um, you know, routing traffic certain ways or requiring traffic to move in and out of certain, um, areas by certain routes. You can, you can make conditions of approval. What you cannot do are some of the things, what they get into the nitty-gritty operations of, of, of business, for example. You know, you can't limit hours, uh, days of operation. You can't limit, you know, who's going to do the op, who's going to be the owner of the business? Who's involved? The particulars of, of exactly how they do their business, uh, you can't get into or dictate to them. You can't require somebody to correct a violation that they have over on the other side of town in, in exchange for permission to get a little relief on this property they own over here on, on the north side, you know, or what have you. You can't require them to dedicate, um, off-site property for parkland purposes or things like that in exchange for variance over here, um, you know, and something that's totally unrelated, so. Again, just to, to kind of wind up, um, some of the things that I, I mentioned earlier, is the importance of making factual findings. You're not required to go out of your way to You're not required to go out of your way to bolster the application or the applicant. You know, ideally, if you're gonna help them in the process, it's while they're putting their application together. You can certainly help people that are coming in with an incomplete application and tell them, okay, I don't think you really want to submit this the way it is now. You know, I think you're gonna need more detail and more support for your application before you put it before us because you're not going to give us much of a chance to approve this for the way it is. But once it's in front of you and, you know, the applicant says it's complete and it's got at least a minimum of what your application requires, you're not at that point, you know, required to go out of your way to try to find different information or supporting documentation for the applicant. That's their job. You work with what you're given. You document the factual findings that are made based on what's presented and link them to the different factors and how you feel that the applicant's submission either meets or does not meet each of those qualifying factors for an area variance or a use variance. Go through them step by step, put them in the record. So that that's part of the record of your decision, whatever it's gonna be, in favor or against. As Jim could probably tell you, you know, anytime you're dealing with waterfront or high-value property, commercial property, there's always more chance for contention between the parties that are neighbors and that type of thing. You could be as likely to be sued by a neighbor that doesn't like the fact that you granted a variance to somebody that they don't think they met the legal standard for as you are being sued by that applicant who you denied because they didn't meet the legal standard. So, you know, unfortunately, it plays into that, what Jim said about it being kind of a thankless job. But again, you know, it's a job that can be done. You buckle down, you look at the standards, you look at what facts are presented and what information's presented to you and you make the best decision you can based on what's there. But the main thing is to document it. You certainly can get input, you know, there's some time built into the process to get input from legal counsel when there are questions about whether somebody's met a standard. And when you get a particularly, you know, tricky set of facts, reach out and get that advice. Finally, you're looking at taking action on applications. You have 62 days following the close of the public hearing. And one of the things that I wanted to talk about a little bit is, you know, I've seen, first of all, an applicant can agree to extend the time that the board has to make a decision. Jim talked about some of the quorum issues that come up with vacancies or people just being absent from meetings. You know, sometimes that can make or break an application depending on who's there. And obviously, as an applicant, you'd rather be there on a night when there's five people there than when there's three, especially if they're not, you know, that familiar, you know, perhaps with the application. So, you know, one of the things that can be done there is to agree, if the board will, to extend the time so that you can, you can come back and get it in front of all five members of that board. And the other thing that I've seen done on occasion as well is to hold open the public hearing. If an issue is or an application is somewhat complicated, a little complex, has a lot of factors to it, or even if there are other people that have not been able to participate in a public hearing, either because they're geographically, you know, far away, they can't get there. Maybe they want to submit something writing. That's another way to buy some time. And again, you might, as an applicant, might want to do it so that you have more members there, that you have a chance to hear your application as opposed to having to win three out of three. So. There are some examples here. I don't know if Jim, you went over some of, you know, what you have to do, you know, these examples of the majority, what it takes to pass a resolution. If you've got a five-member board and for a president, you still just need four to pass it. If you've got five members and, you know, two vacancies, you gotta get all three. If you've got five members and a vacancy and one can't attend, you know, somebody's just absent, you gotta get all three. So, you know, those are, those are things that you have to keep in mind. If an application comes up and it fails, they can do a couple of things. But either way, the decision should be filed within five days with the clerk. That starts the clock. It's important to do that because, first of all, it starts the clock for anybody that wants to seek some other relief through an Article 78 proceeding. So it's important to get that done. When I say the clerk, I'm talking about the town clerk. Now, let's see here. So five minutes? So anyway, if somebody that wants to challenge the decision of the ZVA, again, they have, they have a couple of options. One is the Article 78, which is basically a lawsuit in the state Supreme Court, okay? The other is to just request a rehearing in front of the ZVA. Obviously, Article 78 is gonna be more expensive for anybody that wants to go that route. It has to be done within 30 days when it involves a decision of a ZVA, which is a lot shorter than a typical Article 78. So, you know, the person doesn't have a lot of time to do it. The importance of filing your decision with the clerk is that that clock will never start if you don't do that. So you could, somebody could, you know, have unlimited amount of time if that step is skipped. You know, and that can cause problems for the board and for anybody else that's interested because it really, it just means that nobody has to challenge the decision right away. So it fights against the finality of the decision if you don't do that. The other option is to ask the board to reconsider its position. That can be done by a simple motion by a board member. But the trick is it's gotta be unanimously agreed to unanimous vote of the board members that are present, not a unanimous vote of the board, but of those present. And again, you know, the majority, you have to have at least a quorum to do it. So that is another way to basically say, you know, another relief valve for an applicant that wants to challenge to get the board to reconsider its own decision without having to go to state Supreme Court, okay? So that is about it. That's some of the nuts and bolts of the different types of variances. I hope folks have questions or examples they want to talk about or... How many people here are ZVA members? By the way, I know we have one planning board member, town board member. Planning board, two planning board. Ms. Jones?
Planning board.
You're a planning board member too. I probably scared everybody away from everyone there. Jim did too, if anyone wanted to volunteer in case that ZVA thing comes up. Jim didn't mention that you can't get reappointed if you don't get your training now. So that's one way to make sure you don't stay on the ZVA. But I'm kidding. It is an important function, but it is one that definitely is a somewhat thankless job. So being planning board members, et cetera, you guys have some different challenges, but they're usually ones that you can work through cooperatively and, you know, suggest ways to work through any site challenges that you encounter.
Dave, we have one question. Lynn has a question.
I've always got lots of questions. Dave is a planning board member and also a teacher of real estate courses in New York State. My question is, is only an appraisal sufficient, excuse me, for challenging or could a professional comparative market analysis be done? And they're done now on computer and so forth. I just wonder what your thoughts are on that.
Well, I mean, there's certainly a lot more technology available on market comparison data, I should say, and that technology is evolving really quickly too. So, you know, I don't mean to slight Realtors, Lynn, forgive me.
Anyway, Dave.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I guess you're right. The days of, you know, the Realtor making a wild guess of what a property is worth or something are way, way behind us. And, you know, obviously experienced Realtors never really did that. They always base it on what they know about the market and usually what they know if they're active is quite a lot.
Sure.
And now being able to get data on sales and, you know, so much data that's really down in the weeds as to what a particular property's attributes are and all that kind of stuff has never been greater than today. So, no, I wouldn't say that that's, that would never be acceptable. There's just, there's different levels of detail, obviously. So the more financial, you know, the more financial proof that you could actually put in front of the board, the better that they can rely on that and get some comfort that they can make a good decision.
Well, this is my 42nd year of being licensed as a broker. So I remember the old days, Dave, and I know what they used to bring in. So that's why I just was wondering as far as teaching my students in the future all across New York is whether or not that is a possibility to be used. Of course, appraisal I think would be better, but to help save price costs for the applicant, I just was hoping something else could be used. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate it.
You know, you have to, a lot of times you're looking at what the, what the value of the goal is and, you know, what the value of that property is. You know, a lot of times when, if you're looking at a use variance, you're looking at, you know, pretty significant value commercial property oftentimes. You know, whether it's residential rental or some kind of money-making commercial. So, you know, a lot of times it's worth making that extra, making the extra expense or paying the extra expense, I'd say.
Great. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate it. And thank you, Jim. It's been very informative.
Anybody else?
I guess with that, I'd like to thank Jim and Dave for their presentations tonight. Also like to thank those people that attended in person and those that attended online. If you attended online, you will receive an email tomorrow with a slideshow, video, a link to the video and a certificate of attendance. So with that, I'd like to say thank you and good night.